And God that we would just give you glory in all that is done in this meeting. For everything that is said, for every decision that is made, and we would take into consideration one another, and we would operate in love and peace and harmony concerning the betterment of our community. We give you praise and glory for your leadership, having the wisdom to go in and out amongst your people and to do the things that need to be done for the betterment of Camden. These things we ask and we bless you in Jesus' name.
Set your own feet. We finally have a flag. Would you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So as you know, tonight simply aimed at a little shopping for City Council, and we have grown to the little items of business on tonight. Thank you for practicing social distancing. Thank you for those who wear the mask. I hope you also have taken the opportunity to bring paper and pen so that we can learn and grow together on tonight. I do want to recognize the presence of some of the officials and servants who are here. This Charlotte Young just happens to be one of the justices of the peace, so I have to have you here, especially in that capacity on tonight. Right? So we're ready to discuss the outside fire contracts?
Thank you all for taking that and offering me the opportunity to represent the nation too. I believe in the integrity, as I'm aware of it, the base of the city, the letter that I sent to the mayor explaining some of the history since I've been here of the outside fire contract and how it's progressed over time and how, in my opinion, we need to possibly take a look at the outside fire contract and renewing it and changing it. Possibly getting out of, as you've referred, this is a contract with Highland, which is not only outside the city, it's outside the county, and covers a massive area, masses of area of square footage. I forget what it was, at 1.7 million. There's confusion as to what we were actually covering. There's still a little, I'm not going to say there's not. The board did help out here to take us on that. Here, there was a section within the ordinance that said you couldn't. Basically, what I call piggybacking or grouping, but there was also confusion as to whether it was controlled by Highland or owned by Highland. And so because of confusion, there was some industry out there, I believe. That was taken care of. I think you saw on the letter, we didn't see any increase. Matter of fact, probably went down just a hair, but we saw like $10,312 brought in. There's about $14,000 brought in from residential, within five miles outside the city. The information will show that on the residential, the average household size is about three and a third person on an average per household, which makes it about a $90 per person compared to an $80 per person in the industry out there in the contract. And if they had enough personnel on the contract, it could even get down to as low as $5. You had a thousand people, you'd be paying $5 per person. Why? It was place, a number of employees, the formula, instead of square footage, that was the parameters we were giving them when we went into negotiation. As you saw in the letter, that was one of the parameters that were put in there. That's just how it works. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know there's a lot more in there. You know, we started out, when I first got here, it was about $1,500 a year and you covered all Highland. Then it all of a sudden turned into $5,000 a year in the contract and you covered all Highland. In 2014, after being approached to another administration to go over and look at, we go out there and then the parameters I've gotten in the letter, what we took out there in the negotiation, and it was basically, in my opinion, here it is. And it went to $5,000 still for Highland, but we were allowed to seek contracts with each individual industry that was out there. And because of confusion, it didn't produce much. Clear confusion, it still didn't produce much. It's my opinion for the resources, the risk and everything, to cover such a massive area, now counting the hazards and the dangers that are in that area that you're facing, I know they are real safety conscious, I got that, but you know, things happen. But for the amount we're doing it, I just don't understand it. And as I said, the information, I don't know what the motivation was back then. If it was for money, I think we failed. I don't know exactly what motivated us to cover that area, other than we had people that lived here, worked out there, and that's where we were going. We don't provide them with security, police departments, someone out there and covering that areas. There's a lot of confusion as to that. I just want to bring toward floor, the contracts between the Alderman and the people in the outside fire contracts. I appreciate y'all taking this up, looking at it, discussing it. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
I don't have a question, but I do agree with your assessment. It's not beneficial to the taxpayers of Camden, and I don't think we need to be volunteering to cross into another county to fight fires and jeopardize our firemen or our equipment.
You have a second, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, you have a second?
No, go ahead. Oh, well, yeah, I wanted to ask a couple things. Now, you got this down here on page two about what it is for employee out there versus what it is for households in West Oak County. Is it just a flat?
It's $300, but what I was saying is the average household in West Oak County is 3.33, three and a third person, so that averages out to about $8.
Well, on Highland, you figure, what does it, what do you charge them per employee if it's based on?
$8 per employee.
Well, that's what it is, okay. It's not double or? Not double or $5,000, which would be 625 employees. Now, you have over here that you think the budget to the couples here would be 500 to $2,000. Is that what you recommend to us to go ask?
What I think, and I can tell it be more about the city and its resources and everything, my opinion here's the best thing for them to do would be actually go to the fire department out there and be in the area and cover the area out there. That's not up to us. We're taking on any day, we're basically, it's on party insurance, posting whatever. Most of the people in here, we've had, came up to their house, fire truck probably hadn't come to their house, but they're still having to pay for the fire department. They have three people, and sometimes a coordination, and it has been more than three go out there from what we've had. Cooper Tire Fire, there's several out there, more than three people went out there, more than one engine went out there. But at all times, you basically have an engine and three personnel on standby 24/7, 365 to go out to that area.
How old have you been averaging a year to go out there?
Not many. That's what I'm saying. There's like, I understand, you know, if you went by the volume of what it was, I get that, it's the same thing. We could look at, you know, different things. Twin Towers, Twin Towers wasn't supposed to fall, it falls. Who knows what happened? Everything that they said can't happen possibly can't happen. Highway 278 explosion out there, had a chemist that was married to a relative of mine called me from where the morning nitric came from. He said, "How'd it blow up? It's not supposed to blow up. That shouldn't have ever happened." So all I can tell you is it happened. There's a hole in the ground like you have never seen out here. It had been for a little hurt during the road, and our guys were just on the other side. Three guys began, just like that. Just by grace of God, they just went over just a little hill in the road, there was just enough to send a blast over the top. So the dangers out there alone exist. I mean, they do. That seems, I know, just at face, it seems like a lot, $1,000, $2,000. But the cost of those men and the trucks and keeping them in place, I guarantee you can't put a fire department out there for that, not even close.
Chief National, I have to say.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Alderman Aldridge, for, you know, looking at the risk and this world and the service that we have been rendering, you know, down through the years. And so what you have in the letter, the last two pages, pages, this is what you're proposing, right?
Yes.
From 600 to 800, from 300 to 350, right?
No, where are you at, sir?
I'm looking at your letter.
Okay.
And the last two pages of it, and the incident fee schedule.
Oh, you wrote it, okay, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, is this what you're proposing that we?
That's the actual contract that we do now. That's what we're sending.
Okay. He's saying, we don't want to do that anymore. Okay.
Well, as I said, I sent you reference material, lots of historical data, two letters that were sent in on September 11th of last year, and then also the contract that was included in that that was sent to them. And then the ordinance that are, the three ordinances that are governing that contract and the changes that were made.
Well, and, and, and you know, and I, Alderman Aldridge, I hear you, I feel you, you know, it's like the insurance, you know. You gotta have it. Hope you don't have to use it, but something happened, you need to have it, you know. So I, I, what you propose, I, I agree.
Yes, sir.
So can you clarify, give off on the letter, how many calls you had? So how many calls?
I would have to go back on top of my head. The Cooper Tire Fire out there, been out there on probably, I know off the top of my head, two situations, explosions, people lost their lives, several little fires.
Like half a dozen or dozen a year or something like that.
Probably not that many, sometimes.
And then, and then there's two separate parts, I want to make sure the council understands. I mean, we have one that is a, a usage fee, which is different than our surcharge fee.
Once you go out there, then there's a usage fee, you know?
So the fee that's all worth the $5,000, that's not what's going out there. I mean, that's just $5,000. And then we do have a usage fee, if all the fire department responds, we are able to bill $800 per fire apparatus, I guess, per hour or something. So have we done that on those dozen calls?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do they reimburse us when it's submitted to bill?
They've been pretty good about paying.
That last one, compared to just a homeowner, I mean, if you go out to Aerojet or Lockheed or someone like that, and a bill sent in, I guess they actually pay the bill.
I would have to say, I lean more toward, instead of cutting it off, depending on how they're going to do it, because I do agree that Highland shouldn't pay that much for blanket coverage for all those industries out there. I think that's a little, you know, we have the right to recruit the other industries if we're going to make the call, but maybe we ought to look at upcharging or increasing the per hour, but I don't know what that is, it's not a danger in here, but.
If you don't want me to make this statement first, I think to make, to ensure that we have what they need when they need it, the insurance also helps us. And one of the things that we have to start considering is revenue, is revenue in our city. We're going to have to start figuring out how to keep money coming. We're not going to bring in businesses, we're not going to do any of that. We've got to figure out something. And in the midst of trying to figure that out, that's one of the ways, is an insurance policy that keeps the right amount of people available for any incident of that magnitude to that. And you can't have that type of staff available for that type of incident, because that would be, that would be a regular house fire. So, and so, but tell me, well, Matt, probably we need that kind of staffing for that type of incident anyway.
And to me, it just seems hard for this outside entity to have a better deal than the citizens here inside. And if we went by usage, you're going to afford to run the fire department, I mean, you.
But we're not required to send anything out there.
No, we have no responsibility, legal responsibility out there whatsoever. We chose, we have chosen.
No, no, I'm saying, even if they're running.
No, it's one of these, we don't have to send nobody.
Right. So we're not obligated, they require three trucks, we're going to have to send all three trucks and we can recall that. We're going to send, we're going to send the fire chief, the crews, the staff, the particulars out.
Let me put it this way, according to our evidence, anything we can recall, if we get into a bigger picture with outside entities and lawyers and the federal government and everything else, they could turn around and say, "Now, hey, you started this, and you got in here and you did this, and because of your obligations, we can pull it out," you know, we could be in a mess, regardless of what this ordinance says, as individuals.
We're talking about home, it doesn't matter what, we said that was the campus here, might we just go home. What are we even passing ordinance to for?
No, sir.
I mean, without any other way, I can, but it's, I understand what the legislature states all is, my outside fire agreements is that the local entity can say that they will agree to a fire protection agreement, which leaves the local municipality to decide whether to send anybody or to send the, if they feel like we're leaving nothing reserved, still cut a hand.
Right.
And pull them back. I mean, I know what it is anyway right now, you're saying, it may not really apply when you get started, but.
No, sir. What I was trying to say, what I'm trying to say is these guys have ties with FEMA and everything else, taking FEMA classes, and at certain points, you can almost get tied up in a situation, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know, is FEMA going to get involved, Homeland Security going to get involved and say, "I have some responsibilities for the classes or training or things I've done with Homeland Security and FEMA, and you're here, you're there, you started, you shouldn't have left." And that, we would, we would, and I'm not even trying to get into that, that argument, unless Camden is burning down and we have, go, we would. Look, you know, we all have given in resources, we all have given in personnel, we're already stretched out in the city, and what is that, out there, 15,000 acres, and I don't know how many millions of square feet of buildings? And then there's the confusion as Highland has a contract for all their buildings. Okay, which ones are?
Well, I saw that in your verbiage that you would take care of home first, if you had a situation here in the city or, you know.
Couple questions.
He was, he was observing.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned staffing, can't, more staffing, is this money going to pay for more?
It covers those three.
Is it going to pay for more?
It keeps what we have.
You're talking about hiring more? He said that would help us with more staffing with the $500,000. Are we going to hire more, find them with that $500,000, or is this going to be extra $500,000 we add to keep what we got, more as personnel?
Keep what we've got and try to, you know, budget, I mean, fund what we do have right now.
Yeah, it seems right now. So if something happens out there, it's just like being a police officer.
Yes, sir.
The law from this side of the county and the other side, but here, him, they itself, I'm not even saying, I can't come over there. I mean, we're sort of obligated, you know, you would think, to go help me, even without the law.
You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to get that fire area on the go, they're going to go there, fix the church, so much lives at risk or whatever, we got that, and we understand the limitations inside the city, and we understand the mutual aid agreements we have with fire departments inside and outside the county, with Arrow Reg, with Magnolia. Arrow Reg, Magnolia, both been up here with last, and Arrow Last is up here on fire. And we would do the same for them, and they covered those while our ladder truck was up there in the shop. Arrow Reg's ladder truck was standing by to cover Camden, so we worked that out, that's not a problem.
Well, as I thought, the mess of most happening, and we're not even getting, you know, more business, bringing in, we need more money, but we, not a lot, it seems like we're doing this to make more money because we can't get business than anything else, that sort of thing.
It was basically, we can have what the cost of these personnel are, you've got them up there, on standby, available to you, it's like you said, like an insurance policy there here. If, I think the citizens of the city would like to have the same deal they've got in a way, for $10,000 for the coverage of what you're covering, but if you don't do that here, you're going to have to send half the guys home and shut down the station and everything else, you get down where you wouldn't be close to then. But, I don't know, the information's there, I know it's a hard subject to deal with, and I appreciate you looking at it. Any information I could give you further, I'd be glad to do it.
So, one of the options would be increasing what we charge them to offer the service. That, that is an option. Just out of curiosity, have you had the opportunity, because, because I've got this, we're the first city that's had this, I mean, I know Houston, there's refineries everywhere, you know, other, other places have, have similar hazardous industries, you know, within their zone of protection. Have you had a chance to kind of get an idea, you know, to research other cities and try to find something like that there?
Sure.
I've got something, yeah, look, quite.
I don't like it.
Okay. Well, I've heard this other hazardous, like refineries and, and, you know, other, other thing, you know, chemical companies and, because I wonder if those clusters exist in other places.
You end up, we've learned in Texas and some places, you'll turn around, my wife used to work for the TAD down there at Fort Worth, and I think it was Johnson County, maybe another county beside them. You have one fire department in one county is right buddy up next to other county and all the industry in there, they were kind of across the county line. Well, if they turn around and did, they got the tax money, a certain amount of tax money that was over there, came over into this county since we're providing services. I found that in other places. But contractors sooner than this, not to sit here and take away, here's the going rate. No, sir, I did.
Well, let me just say, before this comes to us in an ordinance, I would appreciate being able to see, I'm going to say the last two years or three years, how many runs have were made and what the, what the bills were on it, of saying, you know, so much an hour or hour that was done, and so what kind of charges have been sent out for it.
One last question, I just want to make sure. So, when you say Highland, are you talking about Highland as well as every single company in Highland? Or are you just talking about the buildings that Highland itself manages? Because I know they happen to have a bunch of warehouses and other buildings as well that they manage, they use for storage and whatnot. Does this all, like, like, does that $5,000 also include Lockheed, Martin, and Aerojet? Okay, so it's just Highlands?
Well, Highland, at one time, the 1,500 originally, covered everything on those grounds.
Right.
And then went up to $5,000, still covered everything on those grounds. The way it stands now, Highland still won't place $5,000, but you're basically covering their properties.
Right.
Where I, Lockheed would be its own, Spectra would be its own, NTS would be its own, Aerojet would be its own, Raytheon would be its own, all like that.
Okay. So, so, so just because if Lockheed catches fire for some reason, God forbid, the Highland contract isn't, we would need one to block it?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, we do not have one at this time. Okay, got you, got you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
I've got one more question. If that law, if we've got, well, I'm getting like $14, $50,000 income or something like that.
$10,000, a little over $10,000.
So, when the ordinance was changed, and we went from doing $5,000 for all of Highland, and then we said we're going to do $5,000 just to Highland, but everybody else is individual. How many businesses have applied for the individual outside contracts outside of Highland?
We've sent letters to just about all of them out there. I think we have right now NTS, Back Truck, Esterline.
A few of them.
Three or four.
And so, I mean, none of the business.
Yes, sir.
That's kind of what I wondered is, is that, so, I mean, I think the law will often be said, the law was all these people were going to sign up and it sounds like the main, but really we didn't, we voted them and not signed up, is that what Perry said?
No, and then they sent letters.
Right.
So Highland, Lockheed hadn't had one in years, Aerojet, I don't know, I'd have to go out and look on those exactly.
Right.
From the fire service end of it, the fire service point of it, that's bad. For there to be a fire department sitting out there, right? That's what's bad.
And the state law fires wasn't too bad.
Us?
Yes. Well, so the, does that do the part of protection green tape if you want? I was reading, I was reading that.
Okay, hold it, I've read that. I like it. Yes, sir. We watch it.
That's a lot of fire academy or something.
Yes, and see, that's another thing, the fire academy, the ALITA, NSU Tech, they're on state property that are in there, so that's a whole issue in itself. We've sort of just covered that for free, we've gone out, the dorms, when the alarms go off, we've gone out there for carbon monoxide, we've gone out there for a lot of things, and that was just sort of like a freebie thing to the state. That's another thing laying out there. Whose district responsibility really is it to cover that college?
And so when something comes in, a call, I mean, if, if not a long call comes in, I mean, how do they, that's going to get toned in, how do you, how do you tone it in to Camden Fire Department?
Normally, when 911 calls in, the tone is out, but sometimes we do get it right over the phone.
And, and when that happens, we, you really don't know, the fire department doesn't know if we're going to do a business that has an agreement or business that doesn't. I mean, is there, they're not, they're trying to stop and say, "Do you have your agreement? Let me verify," and then you call a fire department, I mean, it's actually, or how does that work?
We've got a list, most guys have a list in their street book, and they're in the trucks, like mine's right over the line, if I can pull it down, I've got those grouped, grouped separately, that I can look at them up quick and see.
Okay, if it's covered.
Yeah. But the fire department will respond if they get a call.
How about a list?
I mean, if you go back, there's just some discretion on my part, and on the ordinance that it says there.
They don't have an agreement, and we're not coming out, or at least might not do it.
You know, if the right situation, somebody's life's involved and everything else, are you going to say no?
Right.
That's hard to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, how do you, how do you say no? It's not by, so much about whether we're going to say yes or no, it's about helping fund us if we are going to have to sit here and take care of you out there. Help us fund that, you know?
Do you have any more questions concerning the outside fire contract? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The second item on the agenda is the service contract between Main Street and the city You see the project resolution number 1220, we will, do you have a copy of, got particular session? It looks like, well, we agreed on it, this other pass? Not 2120, this one is, this one is passed, but we have a discussion here now, it's, it'll be 2,500, and I need to, I need, I need to sign this agreement that's between Camden Downtown Network, Main Street Program, and City of Camden for this calendar year. And I saw it on the new agenda, we've already agreed to it, I just signed it.
Well, I think council still can have their resolution authorizing you to exit the contract, and I don't want to have that.
The resolution does mention monetary support.
It does mention the money, the $2,500. You're asked whether you sign, so I thought.
All right. Well, that's what, well, I thought we were going to discuss this, and I think, I think Camden Downtown has more members here to kind of go over what they were going to do, what the city was going to do, what the contract amount was going to be.
All right, well, come on, this is, who's, you have, you speak on the heart.
And Travis. Travis is here to, where he can answer questions.
Come on.
Some of you did come to the meetings that we had, the Main Street meetings, earlier. We worked on this a long time. We were accepted into the Main Street program. We're very new in getting this going, we're excited about it and the things it's going to bring. Main Street is not just festivals and events, but it's also helping with revitalization, economic vitality downtown. We're in the process already of putting together a portfolio of the empty buildings downtown, what their uses have been, what they could be for. Main Street has also been down here from Little Rock to the Longview, we have to go downtown to look at the businesses we have and offer a study of what would be good complementary businesses to go along with what we have instead of overloading maybe on a certain type of restaurant or something, you know what I'm saying? You get a, something else that would draw more people there. We are in the process also of starting up our mini grant program, which this year will help with exterior improvements downtown, such as canopies, signage, paint. We will take those applications and they will look at, be looked at, and actually be chosen through Little Rock, so it does not appear to be any favoritism on the part of the Main Street Board here. But we're looking forward to seeing things happen downtown. Uh, but we're looking forward to seeing things happen downtown. Is there any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment, if I may, um, I was born a ass and, and I come here in this young and I saw you, I was like, well, that's some gold, but when I was reading the, um, the resolution and, and reading the agreement and everything, but, um, I just want to say good job that you all are doing and everything. Um, I had the pleasure of talking to a, a business owner. He come to my house to do some things, and he mentioned that, um, I don't know if it was you, Travis, or one of the business owners adjacent to him talked to him about doing some extra things to his building, you know, to make it a little bit more appealing. And, um, and, and, and he done it. And, you know, and he still has some more work and everything, but you guys are doing an awesome job, man.
Thank you, there's so much potential there, and I'm looking forward to just good things happening in Camden.
So, presently, when you're doing these portfolios, are you able to feel from our economic development or from our Chamber of Commerce to assist with this?
We have not asked for assistance from the MHS, sir. We've gone to records at the courthouse, working with realtors, et cetera, to put this together. It's not complete, but it's in the process right now.
Well, certainly, I would like to cross-pollinate, because we've, we've been actively trying to...
We're working with everybody.
Yes, ma'am, but some, some of it is already done, I was just wanting to say, some of it wouldn't take as long if some of that was already in the works, but if it's not, then you would have to spearhead. Then, or if you had an act you wouldn't know, which is like, I, I don't know, so...
Right, we have a certain committee member that's working on that. We have different tasks that we assign out, so it's not me working on everything. That's why you have different committee members and they have, uh, different assets that they bring to the table.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and so the question that we'll have to present is, uh, the twenty-five hundred, I'm sure we've already found the line. Uh, Mr. Green, have we identified that twenty-five hundred dollar line?
Yes, it's in the...
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, I would ask, who are, uh, the Board of Directors of the Camden Downtown Network? I mean, I'm not asking for a specific role call, are these business owners, are these, uh...
It's a combination of, of everybody. Uh, this actually came, started out as something that was sought out by First Friday. So, there is, from the First Friday Committee, it's myself, Rashvir Kane, Sherry Stillman, and Chris Green, which Chris is an accountant, so he is, he takes care of making sure everything is filed as far as tax papers and keeping all of that in order. Audrey Bell is on the committee, Travis is on the committee. Levon Green is a downtown business owner, Solange One Twenty Four, she is on there, as well as her daughter, Hadiya Washington, which gives us the younger perspective into the committee. Um, Shelby Stone, Sonia Archer, which is from Aerojet, which gives us some feedback from out in the industrial area. And who am I missing, Travis?
Again, I wasn't asking for a role call, I just wanted to make sure you did have, say, a CPA or an accountant or somebody to, to make sure you stay on the legal straight and narrow, uh, maybe legal counsel, uh...
Well, this was run by him, he knows how to see things.
Well, I mean, my question, is there, is it organized, like, I couldn't find, like, is it, is there a, is there an organization?
Yes, it's under the Main Street program. And at this time, it's under the First Friday 501(c)(3), but Chris is in the process of applying for the 501(c)(3) as Camden Downtown Network. The original plan, it came to the meetings, I think, LA, you heard that, that we would start under First Friday as the 501(c)(3), but then we would flip it, and the Main Street would be the head program with First Friday under the umbrella of that. But now, we look to make sure that the board was diversified. Uh, oh, Yolanda, that's who I had, though, Yolanda Lewis is also on the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions concerning the service contract between Main Street and City of Camden? Well, now we've arrived at resolution number twenty-one twenty. The resolution is of the City Council of City of Camden, I'm sorry, requiring services posted on the city website.
We need that.
So, it was, it was tabled last meeting?
Right.
So, was it, did someone have it back, I mean, I thought we just discussed it in the workshop, just kind of addressed it?
This is the workshop, so... I, I got an updated copy of the agenda after I left. Uh, so, and I think we agreed to discuss this at this, to the one part we were there, so I, I don't know.
Well, yeah, well, that's, that's, you know, I mean, just as a workshop, as far as it was tabled, it wasn't tabled until a certain date. So, basically, it's just tabled, and then somehow it's, I want to put that on the agenda, then I make a version of it untabled, put it back on the table so we can address it. It's not overbid, uh, tabling is different from, uh, you know, not voting or not doing action, not coming back the next month. Tabling means just taking off the table, and then you actually got to say, oh, I want to put that on the table so we can bring it back up. So, I mean, it's perfectly good to discuss this workshop, I just didn't know, uh, in that regard, but certainly, certainly good and germane to discuss the workshop.
So, we don't need any motions or anything, just to have a discussion?
No, no, not at all, no, no, no.
Well, let, let me just say, regarding this, I think the conversation at the last City Council meeting, we got a little off track, uh, with, uh, with everything that was being discussed. And, you know, I would want to have the conversation, uh, about just the basic idea of behind it, you know? And if we could just real quick put aside how it's gonna get done for a minute? Just the idea of having the information available, uh, you know, at ease for the citizens of Camden, you know, at a, at a place, you know? Because that, that was my whole point of, of bringing this forward. Uh, we've had, for the last several meetings, several different, uh, citizens get up and ask questions regarding the budget. Uh, and, you know, talking about transparency and accountability, I thought it was a good idea to have that available. There's no, there's no law or anything, it's public information. Uh, there are other cities, uh, that do have this information on their website, available to download, uh, for the view. Uh, my, my idea was just, uh, have a downloadable PDF, that, a single file that can be literally uploaded and put on the website in under ten minutes, uh, on the city website, that would, you know, I mean, if it's the budget, that would be a once a year thing. Uh, literally, anyone with access to this site could do it. Uh, that includes all the department heads. Uh, so, so it wouldn't be a very difficult thing to do. And just the idea of having that information easily available for the citizens to be able to download and look at and review and help, hold us accountable, help hold the, the city, the board of all of them, you know? I mean, these are the decisions they make, and, you know, I personally never believed that, uh, you know, I, I, I personally believe that, uh, that more lies on something is a good thing, uh, usually, you know? So, and regarding the, uh, the packets, uh, like I said, you know, a lot of people have, uh, you know, brought up, you know, it's like... I, I, you know, I know some of their frustrations, uh, you know, this is my first term, uh, but many of you probably remember me, you know, before I was elected, I was here in the evening, I could, sitting in the audience, listening. And, you know, it was always a little bit frustrating for me, uh, because, you know, when I would hear something, uh, basically, a, a resolution, an ordinance, we'd get, uh, you know, brought up, and you would hear, uh, all I would really know about it is that Donald would read the, the brief description of it. Uh, but, you know, I didn't know exactly what it said. Uh, granted, you can go and, and request that information, but, you know, it's hard. If you're having to make a statement on something, many things, especially resolutions, pass that same evening. So, it's hard to get, you know, as a citizen to stay informed and give an informed opinion for us to listen to if, you know, it's discussed and passed, but, you know, before they even get the opportunity to, to, to speak on it, before they even really have knowledge that it's gonna happen. So, you know, that, that was my whole point about this, about having that available. Uh, and like I said, it's kind of the same principle, I get mine as a PDF emailed to me, so it's really worth the work other than taking that PDF and making a button on the website where it can be downloaded. Uh, that, that was my, that was my logic and my reasoning for thinking that this should be done. Uh, maybe I'm wrong on that, but I'd like to hear y'all's opinion on it.
If, if I could, as the city employee, I'll just a little bit here. Um, I am grateful for my job, I love being a service to the City of Camden. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a code enforcement officer for the City of Camden, as an inspector. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Bell, I'm big on making sure the citizens of Camden have all the access they need. But as a city employee, when I hear you say department heads will have an additional responsibility of doing this, I can tell you right now, I'm gonna work. I, I'm, I'm not making excuses, I do my best to get what I can get done, done. There's two people in my office, and you're adding new responsibility to me that I didn't get hired for. It is a lot of work, it is a lot of work, and you had a guy before me, and he may have been better than I was who put in a lot of his personal time to make sure things like that got done. I don't have time for that. I'm not getting home until seven o'clock in the evening, a lot of evenings anyway, I'm supposed to get off at five. I come in at seven almost every single day to make sure I get my tertiary responsibilities done. And you're asking us to add an ordinance or a resolution that will make it mandatory for us to do additional work. We're already understaffed, every department in this city is understaffed, everyone. And that's, you're adding another responsibility to, for a department like me, where there's only two people, that's a responsibility that has to come down on top of all the other things that we already have to do. And I just gave a talk at the Finance Club about the number of nuisance problems we have in the city and what we're trying to do to move forward. So, when you bring up something like that and say, well, I don't have any good solution other than the fact that city employees can get the work done, that is a problem for me, and it's one that I don't want to let you down on, uh, because I want to make sure I'm doing my job for the citizens of the City of Camden. But also, that's another responsibility, and I don't, I don't mean to be complaining about it, but it's responsible, I'm not an IT guy, I'm not good at WordPress. I don't do social media, I have no social media accounts, I, I just don't do it, I think it's poison, I stay away from it. So, I don't know how to do it. You're adding something else to it for me as a department head and an additional responsibility on top of all the other things that we're already doing. So, I'd just like that, I'm not mad at you for it, and I'm all about getting that information out there, please take that into consideration when you say that department heads will have access to it, to do these updates. Oh, they got a lot, so I, I just, I just want to put it out there and ask y'all, please take that into consideration when you're talking about...
Well, yeah, you can, you can, so the, just, that part of the department heads, and when I say that the department heads have access to the site...